The median is now session, I'll stand for the pledge please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You gonna take that Tony? Okay, we begin first order of business opening, closing, reading of bids, letters of interest. First we have project S one ninety-six dash twenty-four, superstructure replacement bridge, one ninety-six Mayflower over Ardmore Trail.
Sorry, I was sitting back there waiting for somebody to come up here and do that, so I guess it's me. Sky Matters Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor of the county city building. The first bid that we, we have three bids that have been submitted for this project of Bridge one ninety-six Mayflower Road over Ardmore Trail. The first bid I'm going to read is from Reese Riley Construction Company. And their bid, total amount of their bid is two million five hundred and four thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents. That's two million five hundred and four thousand dollars, two million five hundred and four thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents. That's Reese Riley Construction. Next, we have ICC Group out of Elbon, Illinois. Their bid is in the amount of two million two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That's two million two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. The final bid I have that I'll read is from Milestone Contractors LP of South Bend, Indiana. And their bid is in the amount of two million two hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. That's two million two hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Is there anyone present wishing to submit a bid that we, hasn't been submitted? Seeing none, we request that these bids be turned over to Public Works for review and award recommendation. Any questions?
Questions, Commissioner Hazen?
No, sir.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We will proceed to project S three zero one dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, preventive maintenance of bridge three oh one Main Street over Indiana Toll Road.
Thank you, we've received three bids for this project also. First bid I will, I will read is from Reese Riley Construction Company. And that bid is for two million five hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred dollars and eighty-five cents. That's two million five hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred dollars and eighty-five cents. The next bid for that project is from the ICC Group out of El, Elbon, Elburn, Illinois. And their bid is in the amount of two million five hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents. That's two million five hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents. And the final bid for that project is from Milestone Contractors LP out of South Bend, Indiana. And their bid is in the amount of two million three hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. That's two million three hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Is there anyone else wishing to submit a bid that has not done so? Seeing none, we request you accept these bids and turn them over to Public Works for review and award recommendation.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hazen, any questions?
No, sir.
They have a motion.
Motion to turn them over for review.
Second.
Motion is second, Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sky Matters. We will proceed to reports and requests. We go to A, approval of the accounts payable docket. They have a motion.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion is second, Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
B, bills passed by the county council ordinances eighty-eight dash twenty-four and eighty-nine dash twenty-four. No motion.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion is second, Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We go to C, revised dates and times for twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioner meetings. Do we have to go into that or? Okay. You have a motion for that one?
Motion to approve the revised dates and times for the twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners.
Well, I would not be in attendance, but second to that.
Motion is second, Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye, 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 aye.
Motion carries.
All right, this is the good part of what we do as elected officials, is honor people like you have done great job, whether a youth, a business, a student, or employee. So far, once we complete the twelve that we're doing tonight, over the past four years, we've given out two hundred and eight of these, which is fun for us. And everybody will be invited to a big banquet, will be February seventeenth at the Fireman's Hall on Lincoln Way West, and we'll send all the invitations out. We're not going to go directly to the agenda because I have to get one person out of here because he has to do a game tonight. So, the Citizen of the Month for November is Ron Hecklinsky. If you want to step up to the podium with your family too, come on up. Ron has posted a four hundred and thirty-four and two hundred and forty-five record. In thirty seasons as an Indiana varsity basketball coach, including leading teams to six conference championships, six sectional, one regional, in his career that included stops at, how do you pronounce it? Wapah-
Wapahani.
Yes, Wapahani, Jasper, Edgewood, Anderson, and Mishawaka. He also served as a college assistant for five seasons at Illinois State and at Ball State. He is a nineteen seventy-four graduate of Saint Joseph High School Indians, thank you, which we both are. And averaged ten points, six rebounds, and one as the best defender. And on a personal note, the reason he is here tonight is he is being inducted next year into the Indiana High School Basketball Hall of Fame, which is a pretty cool award. And for those who have never coached, you never have a day off, you're always thinking of how to motivate your kids, setting game plans, and you're basically a father for the kids that you have for a short period of time. So you're able to develop them. And I can tell you, this man has developed a lot of phenomenal kids during his time who've turned into great adults. It's a, a never-ending job. It's really hard to do. I did it a little bit in high school until I turned my kids into other coaches who helped them along the way. So it's just like teachers and everybody else, you have to have a passion for, you have to have the passion for your youth. You can never get down, you can never be upset, you always have to be positive. And this man is the poster child for doing that for a long, long time. So I'm proud to know him as a friend, a fellow Indian, thank you, that'll never change. But on behalf of the Commissioners, we really are excited to hand you this award for November. You have a mic, sir, you've got thirty-two minutes.
Okay, so I want to introduce my wife, this is my wife Monica. And I want to thank you for this award, being able to be elected into the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame is, is really humbling for me because once you look at the names of, of the, of the coaches and the players that are in that, I mean, you're talking about great, great players. There's also two other South Bend people going in the same night that I am. And one of them is Greg Humnicki, the ex athletic director from Clay High School. And, and then, and then two twins, back in the day, from the middle nineteen sixties, from South Bend, Washington, Lloyd and Floyd Kerr. Now, now Lloyd and Floyd Kerr, when I was eight years old, you know, I was playing them in the driveway. So it's really, really special for me to be able to be inducted with, with gentlemen that have done so much for the state of Indiana. And I mean, the good Lord has put me in this position to work with kids, to teach kids, to teach them about life through athletics, through practices, through perseverance. And I consider myself really, really lucky and really thankful to get this award. And I want to thank you Derek for, for giving me the Citizen of the Month. So, so did you hear that, I'm the Citizen of the Month, okay? So, so, so that, there's a lot that goes along with that back at home, right?
You're speaking dude, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Come on up there for a picture.
They're not carrying that motion.
Come on up for a picture. And you forgot to talk about Bobby, we're shooting in the old basket back in the twenties.
Yes. Come on.
Come on Bobby, come on Monica, come on.
Oh, that's Citizen.
One, two, three, cheese.
You know the Saint Josephians play something?
Yeah, I know, I, I certainly do.
I appreciate it, buddy.
All right, we will get to the agenda now that he is leaving. The Business of the Month for October, is anyone here from Mosher's? Mosher's, Dan, any Mosher's? Okay. Do you want to come up and give a brief summary, Mr. Agostino, since you represent everyone?
And a crusader as well, you're right. And I just want to say for the record that I love it when anyone gets up there for an award and they're taller than Derek Dieter. I'll, I'll give you the speech I gave to area plan commission. In eighteen sixteen, Indiana was founded. That's when the Enabling Act under the Northwest Ordinance was passed and allowed Indiana to become a state. So in eighteen sixteen, the state was formed, and then shortly after that, German immigrants came to this area with their love for German food. And Werner Mosher started Mosher's Restaurant over in New Carlisle with Austrian flair food. Derek and Margaret Zarnicki now run the place, they're wonderful citizens. Margaret Zarnicki's dad was Sheriff Bill Richardson here in Saint Joseph County. They're local people, they do a good job with it, and I think they're well-loved in the town of New Carlisle. And Dan Caruso goes there occasionally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will present that soon. We proceed to Business of the Month for November, Barnabes from Mishawaka. Mr. Hazen?
He is out with a medical problem, so I will take it over to him.
Okay, thank you. Now, the Business of the Month for December, Indiana Dinosaur Museum. We will present that for our own way also. Citizen of the Month for October, Viola Sims, I don't believe is here. And Pam Clays is also not here. Usually people are here to get these awards, so we're just, must be the traffic. Okay, we will proceed to the Employee of the Month for October, Carla is here. Now you have to step up there. Is anybody from, else from Purdue Extension here? Well, thank you, I didn't see you over there. Haven't seen him since like one o'clock. Proceed.
You have my, you have my reading, are you going to read something super lovely I wrote? Okay.
Okay. Carla began her role at Purdue Extension as the Agriculture and Natural Resources Program Assistant Office Manager and has consistently exceeded expectation in every aspect of her work. Since joining the team, she has demonstrated exceptional level of initiative, attention to detail, and problem-solving skills. She has a remarkable ability to anticipate needs and take action without needing direction, often identifying what needs to be done before it's even asked. Whether stepping up to assist a colleague and managee or managing unexpected challenges, she is always proactive, ensuring the tasks are completed efficiently, accurately, and on time. That's awesome.
Hi, my name's Emily Evers, I'm the Purdue Extension County Director.
Close your mic.
Located on the second floor of the law building. Carla, like he said, started a little over a year ago, and she's been a great asset to our team. Unfortunately, Carla is moving out of state to go to grad school, so we are, we are losing Carla. But whenever she wants to come back, she knows where to find us, I'll buy her coffee. So we're really excited for Carla, we know she'll do amazing things.
Awesome. Would you like to speak, Carla? Thank the Academy or?
I just want to thank Emily and the entire team at Purdue Extension. We are a smaller department and we're across the street in the law buildings. But we really do a lot for the community and educators like Emily and everyone else at our office, they really make a difference in the community, they have a lot of great events, Emily works with a lot of farmers. So I was very lucky to be a part of their team and I'm very thankful for their help as well during my time there.
Awesome, thanks, come on up for a photo. The Employee of the Month for November of twenty twenty-four, Morgan Ely.
We have something to read. I do, okay.
Do you want to start, go ahead.
Selena Carr, Human Resources Manager.
Get moved a little closer to the microphone ma'am.
Selena Carr, Human Resources Manager, Human Resources Department, seventh floor of this building.
Thank you ma'am.
You're welcome. So we're thrilled to celebrate the well-deserved selection of Morgan Ely as November's Employee of the Month. Her journey within Saint Joseph County stands as a testament, not only to her hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence, but to the opportunities for advancement and promotion present here at Saint Joseph County. Morgan has without fail demonstrated remarkable patience and composure, even in the most complex situations. Her exceptional problem-solving skills and dedication have made a significant impact on our team and the organization as a whole. We are proud to have Morgan as a shining example of what it means to lead with integrity and determination. Congratulations Morgan on this well-earned achievement. We look forward to seeing continued success that you bring to the table. Thank you Morgan.
Hold on, we got to move the mic down real quick. First, I want to thank God for this opportunity.
Where were y'all at before this?
Upstairs. And I also want to thank my amazing HR team coming in. I, I've been with the county for a little while, but it, it was kind of fun to kind of re-establish the department and yeah, I don't know what to say, so. But I love my team.
Yeah, I would like to compliment you in addition to everybody in our HR. It's a tough job because usually people are calling to complain about insurance or anything and benefits. So our HR people do a phenomenal job and like, thank you for all of your hard work also.
Thank you.
The next Employee of the Month for December, Hannah Parkill.
Hi, Sky Matters, County Engineer. Hannah's been with our department since February of twenty twenty. And Hannah's the type that she, you probably won't, don't see her very much because he's working her butt off back in the corner, getting things done for the county. She did tell me not to ever nominate her for this. But I, I just think that with all the work and everything she does, it's, it's good for her to be recognized. Ever since she's come here, Hannah's been just a go-getter and willing to take on any task you give her. She's revamped our MS four program and has really gotten that in tip-top shape, which was a lot of work. She does a lot, the inspections on our four MS four program, which is soil erosion and those types of things. She also does the review of our, any site plans that come in, subdivisions, and she's willing to take on any task that she's asked. And she's just a, a great person to work with. And I'm, we're very fortunate to have her in our department. And our department wouldn't be where it's at now without her, and we hope she stays forever. Or at least as long as I do. But she's, she's just a, a real, a great asset for the county to have. And she's just the nicest person you'll ever meet. She's got two beautiful daughters that she takes care of, and so she's a busy person all the time and, and we're just very fortunate to have her, and I couldn't imagine the office without her. And so we, we're very glad to have her.
Okay, thanks Sky, I'd like to thank, I guess everyone I work with, Sky is obviously a great boss, never had issues. I don't even know the last time I've won an award, probably a participation award somewhere because I never win awards. So yeah, thanks everyone for recognizing me, and that's about it.
Okay, Mr. Principal, since you have a nice jacket and stuff, the next three U's are from Marquette, which is a phenomenal building, and we just happen to have the principal here tonight. And we will start out with the Youth of the Month for October is Luke Harmon. Okay Luke, step up.
Come on up Luke. All right, now first of all, at Marquette Montessori Academy, we have three-year-olds through seventh graders, okay? So we have little, little three-year-olds like this, all the way up to big bad seventh graders like this. And I'm just, I'm going to read to you what I asked four different adults to, to write up, a little write-up on Luke. And literally, they were all almost identical. And this is, and I combined pretty much everything into this. Luke is an outstanding student who-
Oh, you got-
Look at that, huh? Luke is an outstanding student who consistently demonstrates a positive attitude and strong work ethic. He is always willing to help others and show great consideration for his classmates. Luke's kindness and use of encouraging words create a supportive environment for everyone around him. His dedication to his studies and the effort he puts into earning excellent grades makes him a well-deserving candidate of Student of the Month. He exemplifies trust, integrity, and respect every day. He is kind-hearted and willing to help whenever he is asked. He is responsible, kind, and an amazing role model, not only a role model for his peers, but he's also a mentor to our preschool children and he helps out when needed. He is respectful and considerate, and we are proud of the young man that Luke is. I can't say that for all seventh graders either, by the way.
Jump up there Luke, you want to say anything?
I would like to thank Mr. Emery for allowing me to be up here getting Student of the Month.
Awesome. Well, come on up for, what's your favorite NFL team? Chiefs, congratulations, you get a-
The Bears.
Come on up.
We got a video and pictures, but we need, we need more pictures. Ready, one, two, three, cheese. We never get this close to deer.
Bobby, you got to get a picture in that jacket before we go.
It was a wear everything, you know, Christmas-y today at school, and so the whole school was just- We have many visitors coming in and out of our classrooms, Mr. Strunk can agree to that. We have a lot of folks in and out, in and out, and I can always count on Matthew to welcome the visitors, greeting them as they enter, showing them around, and saying goodbye when they leave. And he strives to be this on a daily basis. Now, we have mixed grade levels at Marquette, so as, he's in lower elementary, so we have first, second, and third graders in the classroom. And as a third grader, Matthew is one of the leaders in the room. Now, this school year, now, this is just a prime example of his, of his kindness and his genuine love of others. This school year, a new first grader joined his classroom and this student, he struggles mightily with anxiety on a daily basis and he's afraid to even enter the school building, let alone the classroom. So we have, so we have a plan that once we get the first grader into the building, he sits on the bench in the main hallway and it helps him adjust to the, to the school setting. And every day, Matthew comes down, greets him, talks to him, and encourages him to come on upstairs. And it's just beautiful to see, beautiful. He's a third grader just with kind heart, the kindest heart, and once the young man is in class, he's fine. And Matthew makes sure to check on him and make sure he's doing well throughout his day. The world would be a better place if we all had a heart as big as Matthew's.
So I just want to say thank you to Mr. Emery for giving me this opportunity to be up here as Student of the Month. And I feel nervous, but I'm really happy to be here and I also want to thank Mr. Emery again for representing me as a really good student with a kind heart.
Awesome. Come on up, dude.
Cheese, cheese. Ready? One, two, three, cheese. Cheese, one, two, three.
We will proceed to Keys of the County, but before we do that, I would like to thank Principal Emery. You don't find, I shouldn't be critical, but like, you can tell by his personality, you can, his enthusiasm, Marquette School and South Bend School should be very, very happy that they have a fine young man like this who cares about his kids, who's involved with his kids, who shows some attention to them, that knows their lives. He also does a lot of stuff in the community. We've talked a lot of old history. He did an in-depth interview with the late Mr. Lynch, which I appreciate, but even though he wears some funky clothes like that, he does a great job, so. On behalf of the Commissioners, we'd like to thank you for all your. Mr. Commissioner. Harmon?
I'd like to say a few words.
Have at it.
I just want to say thank you to you, Derek, for bringing this program from the South Bend Council to the Commissioners Board. I've enjoyed it for the short time I've been here and I know that Carl said he's really enjoyed it. I spoke with Raphael, he thinks it's a great program. We will make a commitment to you and to the public to continue it. I don't know if it will be as lively and fun festival as it is without you, but I want to say thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, sir. Now, we will proceed, Keys of the County, we will start with Robert Bobby K. Krasinski. Step up to the podium, so. It might take a couple minutes, he'll, he will get there. Um, well, we're gonna open up this to everybody, but first I will say that he has been a longtime staple of county government. He's basically given his life to public service, spending seventeen years, correct, as the Highway Commissioner, three years working for the county police, and eight years as a county council representative, and then two years as a county surveyor. Everything he's done, he's done with passion, with honesty, with credibility. His mantra has been doing things the right way for the county. We have worked hand-in-hand during the time I've known him, from years gone by, we established a friendship a long time ago and done a lot of things in government and it's interesting, actually more sad, that we get vilified by each party that we're affiliated with because we talk together, we work together. So hopefully, all the elected officials can take a, a page out of that book and work together collectively. You don't have to like everybody, you don't have to, to hang out with them, but you certainly should be able to work with him. And then, our short period of time, and I've jotted down a few and I may miss some, that we worked, number one, to have new security in the building. The one we had before was abominable. We did the work to have the lobby remodeled. We got new EMA people, we got new PSAP people, we got a new HR director, we got a new IT director, we revamped the maintenance we had in the building, we shut down Portage Manor, we started a code enforcement, we started a vehicle policy. In addition to everything else that's done on a, on a daily basis, the building study, we had a place to go, but that's in the rearview mirror. But everything that he has done, which everybody knows, is, is a long list and I will thank him because he has gotten me elected twice, once as a Commissioner and, and this as a surveyor, to, to mentor me of everything the surveyor does and I can't tell you how much that means to me personally, but professionally, of everything he's done for his career has been above board and he will talk and he will listen to anybody, so for me, I really appreciate all that time. Therefore, I know there's other people who'd like to speak about him, Commissioner, soon-to-be Morton, so come on and step up here.
Did you say this was gonna take a few minutes?
Yeah, if there was a race, I don't know who'd win. I got you.
Good evening and I appreciate this opportunity to speak about my longtime friend Bobby K. Bobby worked with my uncle, Jack Reed, when he was Highway Commissioner and Jack was Assistant to the Mayor under Kernan and Licky. And that's when I first got to know Bobby, when I was a young councilman, so you know that was like fifty years ago. But, now, come on, you're supposed to laugh at that one, come on now. But I've gotten to know Bobby and over the years, we worked together on the council, as you just said, Derek, for eight years. But outside the council, we've become very close friends and I have to echo your comments, Derek. Very passionate, loves what he does, very knowledgeable, does his due diligence on every decision that he makes, and it just don't come any better, in my book, than Bobby K. Krasinski.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just whoever else wants to speak, get in line, so we don't have to watch you walk up here.
Hello, Councilman Dan Schatzel, one of the Republicans that won in 2022 and flipped the council Republican. And I can tell you, walking in, I wasn't so sure because it was contentious, right? And it was a huge, it was a surprise to a lot of people and so I wasn't sure how the, how the Democrats in the building were gonna treat me, to be honest with you. And one of the first people that, you know, really showed me kindness and let me know that he was ready to work with me and just, just friendly, was Bob. And I, I really want to thank him for that, you know, I, I agree with everything Derek said, he really kind of epitomizes what a public servant is.
Thank you.
Hi, Sky Metters, County Engineer. When I, I first started as the County Engineer back in 2021, I'd worked with the county about a year and a half before then and before that, I was, I worked all private industry. And, you know, I might have had twenty-some years of experience, but it was all on the private side, which is a totally different, different, uh, work, work setting, I guess. And I came in and, and I was scared to death. I remember when Commissioner Costini offered me the job, he said, "I hate to inform you, but I'm offering you the county engineer position." And he's like, "So, you want to take it or not?" And so, when I took it, I, I came in, you know, not really knowing, I, I knew what engineering needed to do, but, you know, on the maintenance side and other things, there's a lot I need to learn. And Bobby got ahold of me and really, you know, helped out in that area, really let me know how, you know, a lot with the highway, shared his experience there, shared his experience with, you know, the budgeting and those types of things. And that has really helped me get to where I am. And without that, I, I really would have been struggling that first, first year or two and I, and I just can't, I, I can't express how much I appreciate that and that mentorship that he gave me. And, you know, I, we're gonna miss having him around on the seventh floor, but I'll definitely be, definitely be meeting for coffee because he's become a friend of mine too, so I want to thank you, Bobby. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Dan Caruso, do you want to say anything? Get up there.
Be nice.
See, you're making him cry now.
I haven't known Bobby all that.
We need your name and address for the record, sir.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle.
Thank you.
I haven't known Bobby all that long. He was my councilman for the first few years that I became familiar with him. I have found him to be very proactive, very interactive with, whenever I had an issue, and believe me, I've got issues, whenever there was an issue that was gnawing at me about something that was going on, particularly with all the development over my way, I, I knew I could go to Bobby and get information and if, if he didn't have it, he would get it for me. I appreciate, I, I appreciate Bobby's friendship and I look forward to having coffee and maybe some other types of beverages with him soon.
Mr. Commissioner?
Hold on, just hold on there. Go ahead, young lady. He'll be afterwards, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Deb Doral, 21677 Otten Road, South Bend. Bobby was my councilperson and he was always available by phone call or text. He showed up at all of the meetings outside of these kinds of meetings. He, we didn't always agree on everything, but we always were able to talk them through and explore both sides of issues and he's a very quality person, great public servant. We are sorry to see him go, but we know we are going to see him doing some other things. But before I finish, I know Bobby received an award from the state, which I don't believe has been listed tonight, from Governor Holcomb.
That's correct.
And what was that award?
Sagamore of Wabash.
He received the Sagamore of the Wabash Award a couple years ago.
Twenty twenty.
Okay, 2020. That's pretty spectacular. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Krasinski, the microphone is yours. Oh, Mr. Castillon, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Commissioners, Michael Castillon, St. Joseph County Assessor, his office is located on the third floor. I debated on telling a few funny stories, but I could tell you the first impression I had of Bobby was like, "Son of a gun, I'm gonna have to buy him breakfast."
Shocking.
Just kidding, Bobby. You know, Bobby was.
I did, yes.
He was, he was instrumental in helping me get the resources I needed when I was the Penn Township Assessor to make the Penn Township Assessor's Office successful. I think what he was, he was willing to talk to the other Commissioner, the other councilman, he was always willing to listen. And what struck me most about Bobby was he just didn't care about his district, he cared about the entire county. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a loss for us to lose him, but I wish him the very best. You'll always be my friend, Bobby, if you ever need me, you know where I'm at.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Is the floor mine now?
It's yours, dude.
Well, for me, to stand up here and accept this award or key to the county is an understatement because it's nice to get these awards, but as you mentioned, Derek, and the people that spoke, you know, before me, there's no I in team. And when I think back. I knew what engineering needed to do, but, you know, on the maintenance side and other things, there's a lot I need to learn. And Bobby got a hold of me and really, you know, helped out in that area, really let me know how, you know, a lot with the highway, shared his experience there, shared his experience with, you know, the budgeting and those types of things. And that has really helped me get to where I am. And without that, I really would have been struggling that first year or two. And I just can't, I can't express how much I appreciate that and that mentorship that he gave me. And, you know, we're going to miss having him around on the seventh floor, but I'll definitely be, definitely be meeting for coffee because he's become a friend of mine, too. So I want to thank you, Bobby, I appreciate that.
Dan Caruso, do you want to say anything? Get up there. See, you're making him cry now.
I haven't known Bobby all that-
We need your name and address for the record, sir.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle.
Thank you.
I haven't known Bobby all that long. He was my councilman for the first few years that I became familiar with him. I have found him to be very proactive, very interactive with, whenever I had an issue, and believe me, I've got issues, whenever there was an issue that was gnawing at me about something that was going on, particularly with all the development over my way, I knew I could go to Bobby and get information. And if he didn't have it, he would get it for me. I appreciate, I appreciate Bobby's friendship. And I look forward to having coffee and maybe some other types of beverages with him soon.
Mr. Commissioner?
Hold on, just hold on there. Go ahead, young lady. He'll be afterwards, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Deb Doral, 21677 Otten Road, South Bend. Bobby was my councilperson. And he was always available by phone call or text. He showed up at all of the meetings outside of these kinds of meetings. We didn't always agree on everything, but we always were able to talk them through and explore both sides of issues. And he's a very quality person, great public servant. We are sorry to see him go, but we know we are going to see him doing some other things. But before I finish, I know Bobby received an award from the state, which I don't believe has been listed tonight, from Governor Holcomb.
That's correct.
And what was that award?
Sagamore of Wabash.
He received the Sagamore of the Wabash Award a couple of years ago? Okay, 2020, that's pretty spectacular. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Krasinski, the microphone is yours. Oh, Mr. Castillon, you have the floor, go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Commissioners, Michael Castillon, St. Joseph County Assessor, with offices located on the third floor. I debated on telling a few funny stories, but I could tell you, the first impression I had of Bobby was like, "Son of a gun, I'm going to have to buy him breakfast."
Shocking.
Just kidding, Bobby, just kidding, Bobby. You know, Bobby was, I did, yes. He was instrumental in helping me get the resources I needed when I was the Penn Township Assessor to make the Penn Township Assessor's Office successful. I think he was willing to talk to the other commissioners, the other councilmen. He was always willing to listen. And what struck me most about Bobby was, he just didn't care about his district. He cared about the entire county. It's going to be, it's going to be a loss for us to lose him, but I wish him the very best. You'll always be my friend, Bobby, if you ever need me, you know where I'm at.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Is the floor mine now?
It's yours, dude.
Well, for me, to stand up here and accept this award or key to the county is an understatement. Because it's nice to get these awards, but as you mentioned, Derek, and the people that spoke, you know, before me, there's no I in team. And when I think back about my years of service to the county and to the city, you don't do things like this alone. There's plenty of people that have their fingerprints on that key when I do receive it, if you still give it to me. And many are in this room, and I appreciate the comments from Mr. Morton, who was president of the council for eight years, you know, I learned a lot from him, you know, Raphael. You know, we have some discussions at times, but they were positive. But again, it was for the best of the county. And Mr. Schatzel, I appreciate your comments because I am willing to work with anybody or any party. As the three commissioners know, Mr. President Vaxmeyer is not here, but he's probably glad to see me go because we are on the seventh floor. His door was always open, but I'm pretty sure you probably told Melissa or Jane back then, "If you see Bobby K., tell him I'm not here." You know, because I've always, he always had that open door, he's always willing to listen. Whether, you know, it was positive or not positive, but Carl listened, and he always got back to me, and I appreciated that. And the same thing with Commissioner Hazen, you know, we've been apart for a while, but Tony and I go back to Mishawaka days, 30, 40 years ago, Commissioner Zapia and that group, Tony, back when you were police chief, and you and I have always been friends. And I'm glad you're doing a very good job up here. And Commissioner Dieter, well, that's a story in itself, you know? Derek listed a lot of things that you were accomplished, but again, I couldn't have done it without, you know, the commissioners, the current commissioners, or the previous commissioners, or the county council. You know, it's, again, it's not an "I," it's a "we" thing. And that's the way I've always looked at things, you know? And I do, I look up the county as a whole, not just as my district, and I appreciate the comments from Dan and Deborah. But sure, I'm concerned about my district, but I'm concerned about the citizens of St. Joe County also. Because some of the decisions we make affects all of them, not just the people in our district. And Sky Matters, our office is always available at Martin's upstairs, you know, in Mayflower, you know? Sky and Bill and the IPG staff, you know, since I've been surveyor and sat on the area plan, I can't thank them people enough for their help. And Sky, you know, giving Hannah the Employee of the Month, she has been outstanding because she does a lot behind the scenes, as Sky mentioned. But again, without the IPG staff, you know, especially Dee in the office also, you know, it's been great. They made it easy for me this last two years, and I can't thank everyone enough for all their help and support, and especially you, Commissioner Dieter. Carl's probably going to be glad that I'm gone because he's probably tired of hearing Bobby K. and I, and Bobby K. and I, and Bobby K. and I. But as Deborah said, I'll be around. I'm not dead yet, but I'll be around.
Thank you. And how many keys does this make for you?
Well, this one here is going to break the tie, you know? I have three with the city and three with the county.
All right, well, I've got six, I'm just saying.
Well, this one's going to break the tie, so it'll be seven.
Okay, thank you. Come on up, dude. We have another key to give out, Patty St. Clair. So we have the deputy and the actual assessor. So who do you want to speak first, Michael?
We'll have the chief deputy speak first.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Altonary.
Step up to the microphone, please, ma'am.
I'm Altonary, Chief Deputy Assessor on the third floor. As you're aware, there are many responsibilities that an elected official must complete when holding office. One responsibility I have the privilege of holding is the ability to provide recognition for outstanding employees that have dedicated themselves to the service of this county. There is no better example of this service than Patricia St. Clair. Ms. St. Clair has provided service and leadership that has spanned not only the careers of four assessors, but resulted in a decades-long profession. Her journey began as a commercial deputy in 1978 under the Assessor, Ideal Bedoni. She continued her work in the Portage Township Assessor's Office with the transition of Assessor Joe Vitale. For almost eight years, Patty provided counsel and support to Assessor John Vorday, eventually dedicating herself to the position of Chief Deputy Assessor under Assessor Rosemary Mandričić. Ms. St. Clair did not just provide guidance, but helped to usher in a new era of assessing for St. Joseph County. Her commitment to not only this office, but to this county is commendable. I am requesting Ms. St. Clair to be recognized for her unwavering loyalty and devoted decades of service.
Thank you. Mr. Castillon?
Honorable Commissioners, again, Michael Castillon, St. Joseph County Assessor, the office is located on the third floor. So I'd like to take a moment just to fill in between the lines of that letter that the chief deputy read. Assessing is often a difficult job, falling between fairness, upset taxpayers, and ensuring the county has the funds to function in a whole. Very few people can say they had a job as the deputy assessor, much less for 38 years. Over that time period, we have seen significant changes in the assessment process from education requirement to technology changes. Patty was always steadfast in her dedication to the citizens of St. Joseph County, meeting every requirement set by the state and doing so in a timely manner. Even when times were tough, and even when things had changed faster than we can keep a hold of, she's found a way to make sure that she can continue to do the job. Her dedication and commitment were in keeping of the highest tradition of public service. Although she will be moving on, she will be greatly missed. I sincerely wish her fair winds and following seas as she moves on to her next endeavors. Patty agreed to stay on board, even though she wanted to retire to make sure that I was successful. She wanted to make sure that we continued the legacy of good stewardship of the county and the assessor's office. So for that, I am eternal grateful, and I wish her the very best as she moves into the future.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience like to say anything? Okay, I would just like to thank you for the years of service, as been alluded to a couple of times here tonight by people. The world of elected officials is crazy. You don't know who's going to be coming after you, you don't know who's going to try to backdoor you, you don't know who to associate with. But as both of the people who spoke well about you, it's a job where people are coming up here, then they're upset. They're not going to say, "Hey, how you doing? I really appreciate this." They're either up to get information, to complain, and sometimes give people a hard time because they don't understand the process and all that. So that's probably, if not one of the most difficult jobs that you guys have in that office, of people coming in here daily, and I think you may have, if our security would know, probably the most people who come into our building are coming up to your office to complain or make a statement. So that's a long time to be doing what you've been doing. And there has never been a bad word from anybody that I'm aware of, of this person. This person's always there to help, to do the right thing for the people and the taxpayers of St. Joe County. So that's something you should be very proud of, so. Commissioner Hazen? Well, thank you. Well, come on up here, young lady, oh, but you speak first.
No, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. They pretty much covered all of the aspects. When I started with ID, I had no clue I'd be working, you know? But the assessors believed in me, and I was able to continue working and growing and learning throughout all those years. So that's what I really appreciate, was the respect that I got from those officeholders and everybody I worked with.
Right, that's one thing that Mr. Castillon has said of just the technology since he's been here is extremely complicated, but there hasn't been any glitches, you guys have all tackled that well. So I thank both of you for all the fine job you all have been doing.
Thank you.
So we have more stuff, Selena, you can't leave. We move to our approval of denman of SJC Personal Health Assessments Contract with Beacon Health Ventures.
Thank you, Selena Carr, Human Resources Manager.
Speak up a little bit, I can't hear you.
Selena Carr, Human Resources Manager, Department of Human Resources, seventh floor of the county city building. We have before us this evening the contract for approval for annual personal health assessments, also known, or better known as PHAs. These screenings will be held at Paragon Clinic for 2025, as they were held in 2024 at Paragon Clinic. The screenings involve vitals that are taken, that include height, weight, pulse, blood pressure, body mass index, performed with labs for employees and covered retirees. Results are mailed to participants within six weeks. Critical results will be reviewed and scheduled with Dr. Henderson, the medical director, while others are encouraged to meet with our wellness coach, also located at Paragon Clinic. Our goals for 2025 is to have 400 screenings, 1,400 screenings, and that would include our employees as well as covered retirees. This provides continuity of care in a healthcare setting. We're proposing flexible year-round scheduling. Although departments will be scheduled individually, communications will be sent out throughout the year in regards to scheduling those appointments. We've been able to save the county to the tune of $20,000 with using Paragon Clinic. Paragon would also like to share that they obtained just about 51 new patients as a result of our employees going over to Paragon Clinic. We're, that was one of our goals, to highlight the services at Paragon Clinic. And that is our contract before us today for approval. Any questions?
I do not have any. Commissioner Hazen?
Nothing, thank you.
Other than that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the addendum of St. Joe County Personal Health Assessment Contract with Beacon Health Ventures.
We'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion in a second, Commissioner Hazen? Aye. Mr. Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank your staff, everybody, that's another untold thing that happens in our world of people calling to health, whatever. But, and then I can tell you specifically of being an employee of the city of South Bend for, what, 39 years and county now, the insurance that the county has is, blows city insurance away. So people may complain, but they have a real good deal with the clinic, so we thank y'all for that. You don't have to leave if you don't want to. We proceed to ask approval of the settlement agreement Chad Tanner versus St. Joe County Highway Department.
Good evening, Commissioners, Bree Roberts, Director of Procurement, with offices on the seventh floor of this building. As you said today before you, as a compromise agreement, an award with regard to the matter, Chad Tanner versus St. Joseph County Highway Department. The amount of this settlement is $8,000 in total. And this has been previously negotiated by our workers' compensation attorney, Kevin Kearney, as well as the workers' compensation board. And this has been pre-reviewed by legal counsel, and we ask for your approval.
Okay, any other legal issues we need to know? We're good? All right, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the settlement agreement between Chad Tanner and the St. Joe County Highway Department.
Second.
Commissioner Hazen? Aye. Mr. Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceed to IPG, under A, Approval of Resolution, to declare emergency repairs for falling culvert on Sycamore Road over Rupert Lake Lateral to Burke, number one, south of Quinn Road.
Good evening, Sky Matters, Department of Structure Planning and Growth, office on 7th and 11th floor. Our crews got a call about a settle, some settlement happening in a road near this culvert on Sycamore Road, just south of Quinn. And we went out and took a look, and it looked like the culvert itself is in the process of failing, which is what's causing the sinkhole. And so we closed the road, and we're requesting this declaration of emergency repairs so we can work with a contractor to get it fixed. The plan is to go in and pour an invert inside the culvert, that's what's eroded. We don't have the funds at the moment to go and do a complete replacement, and that would take a while to do that. So this will repair it, and it'll be a repair that'll last quite a while until we can get around to repairing it, and then we'll be able to open back up the road. It is, the repair itself is, we have a quote for approximately $138,000, so it's less than $150,000. And Mr. Garrett has reviewed this and the resolution, and we recommend your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Anthony Hazen?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the emergency repairs for the culvert on Sycamore Road.
You can read the rest of Rupert Lake, I'll second that.
Motion to second, Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good, let's go to B, Approval of Engineering Services Agreement for Bridge 196 Mayflower Road over Ardmore Trail Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
Yeah, this is one of the projects that we received bids for tonight. And what this item is for is an agreement for engineering services with Lawson Fisher Associates to provide construction inspection while that project's going on. They were selected as the consultant to provide construction inspection for the Mayflower Bridge over Nick D. and Norfolk Southern Railroads, which is just a few hundred feet away from this bridge. So we'll see some cost savings with having them as the construction inspector on both bridges. Happy to answer any questions and recommend your approval.
Questions, Commissioner Hazen? Give me a motion.
Motion to approve the engineering service agreement for Bridge 196 Mayflower Road.
Second.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We proceed to the assessor, under A, Approval of Proposal for Real Estate Appraisal Services with Burns and Walsh LLC. Thank you, Surveyor Krasinski.
Hi, I'm Altonary, Chief Deputy Assessor. We're asking for approval for the proposal of the appraisal services with Burns and Walsh. They will be handling our commercial appraisals when we have to go to the Indiana Board of Tax Review.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hazen?
No questions?
To a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement between Burns and Walsh.
Second.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Proceed to B, Approval of Proposal for Real Estate Appraisal Service with John Snyder.
John Snyder will be providing appraisals for residential properties that will be going to the Indiana Board of Tax Review.
Thank you. Commissioner Hazen?
No questions? Motion to approve.
So we checked into it, and I have it from a fairly reliable source, who is no longer in the room, but it is not confirmed, because I understand these things are sometimes kept confidential, but I think that may be a mistake. This is really good news, that I think the public would like to hear, that Amazon may already be doing this in the Olive Township, New Carlisle area, which of course, we have the Kankakeeographer there. So I encourage you to read the letter, I think that this is potentially a game changer. I'm thinking it would be a good thing to add to the list for other data centers and companies who come to the area and want to use the water here. So also, secondly, I want to again shout out that if anyone is interested in the Portage Manor Woods project that is going on, I do feel that St. Joseph County has successfully raised the bar on ecological assessments on their properties, and this is a really high-quality report, Derek Dieter has several of them, but it's also available online. Thank you very much.
Ma'am? Do we have anyone else?
No one else.
Nobody else? Wants to talk to us? Incoming Commissioner Morton, you good? All right, thank you. May I have a motion to recess, Commissioner Hazen?
Will you?
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So we have more stuff, Selina, you can't leave. We move to our approval of denman of SJC Personal Health Assessments Contract with Beacon Health Ventures.
Thank you. Selena Carr, Human Resources Manager.
Speak up a little bit, I can't hear you.
Selena Carr, Human Resources Manager, Department of Human Resources, seventh floor of the county city building. We have before us this evening the contract for approval for annual personal health assessments, also known, or better known, as PHAs. These screenings will be held at Paragon Clinic for 2025, as they were held in 2024 at Paragon Clinic. The screenings involve vitals that are taken, that include height, weight, pulse, blood pressure, body mass index, performed with labs for employees and covered retirees. Results are mailed to participants within six weeks. Critical results will be reviewed and scheduled with Dr. Henderson, the medical director, while others are encouraged to meet with our wellness coach, also located at Paragon Clinic. Our goals for 2025 is to have 400 screenings, 1,400 screenings, and that would include our employees as well as covered retirees. This provides continuity of care in a healthcare setting. We're proposing flexible year-round scheduling, although departments will be scheduled individually, communications will be sent out throughout the year in regards to scheduling those appointments. We've been able to save the county to the tune of $20,000 with using Paragon Clinic. Paragon would also like to share that they obtained just about 51 new patients as a result of our employees going over to Paragon Clinic. We're, that was one of our goals, to highlight the services at Paragon Clinic, and that is our contract before us today for approval. Any questions?
I do not have any. Commissioner Hazen?
Nothing, thank you.
Other than that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the addendum of St. Joe County Personal Health Assessment Contract with Beacon Health Ventures.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And thank your staff, everybody, that's another untold thing that happens in our world of people calling thing, health, whatever, but, and then, I can tell you specifically of being an employee of the City of South Bend for, what, 39 years, and county now, the insurance that the county has is, blows city insurance away, so people make a complaint, but they have a real good deal with the clinic, so we thank you all for that.
You don't have to leave if you don't want to. We proceed to ask approval of the settlement agreement Chad Tanner versus St. Joe County Highway Department.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bree Roberts, Director of Procurement, with offices on the seventh floor of this building. As you said today before you, is a compromise agreement and award with regard to the matter Chad Tanner versus St. Joseph County Highway Department. The amount of this settlement is $8,000 in total, and this has been previously negotiated by our workers' compensation attorney, Kevin Kearney, as well as the workers' compensation board, and this has been pre-reviewed by legal counsel, and we ask for your approval.
Okay. Any other legal issues we need to know? We're good? All right, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the settlement agreement between Chad Tanner and St. Joe County Highway Department.
Second.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proceed to IPG, under A, Approval of Resolution to Declare Emergency Repairs for Bridge 196, Mayflower Road over Ardmore Trail Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bree Roberts, Director of Procurement, with offices on the seventh floor of this building. As you said today before you, is a compromise agreement and award with regard to the matter Chad Tanner versus St. Joseph County Highway Department. The amount of this settlement is $8,000 in total, and this has been previously negotiated by our workers' compensation attorney, Kevin Kearney, as well as the workers' compensation board, and this has been pre-reviewed by legal counsel, and we ask for your approval.
Okay. Any other legal issues we need to know? We're good?